Good morning. I'd like to call to order the March 8, 2021, regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission. We'd like to welcome Chaplain Phillips-Notgrass from the Mobile County Sheriff's Office to the podium to deliver our invocation. We will stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray together. Dear Heavenly Father, you know us better than we know ourselves. I ask that your grace and your peace would bring comfort and healing to our hearts. May your purpose and vision for our county be our purpose and vision as well. And may your kingdom come and your will be done as it is in heaven. We thank you for your goodness towards us and give you all the glory and the praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some very special guests with us this morning. The first of whom is the brand-new University of South Alabama football coach, Kane Womack. I hope I'm saying that correctly. I'd like to invite you to the podium to say hello.
Yeah, Commissioner, I'm gonna give, Nick Lachas, Government Relations. I'm gonna give a quick introduction for Coach before he comes up here. And just wanted to thank you, all three of you, for giving us just a minute this morning. I think that the most important thing is, 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 Coach is not all about just winning football games. He's a community guy. He brought his entire family back to Mobile. He wanted to be here, and he's doing a lot of work right now to really engage and invest himself in his staff and the whole football program into this community. So it was really important, one of the first things he did, and his staff reached out to me and says, "Nick, we gotta get out in the community. We gotta meet folks. We gotta get to know them, and that's why we're here today." So without that, I'll introduce Kane Womack.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, Commissioners, and to be here and get a chance to, to engage. Very excited to be the head coach at South Alabama. This is a place that my wife Melissa and I care deeply about. We love South Alabama, but we also love Mobile a great deal. And I think when you look at the landscape of our country and you look at the landscape of college football, it is important, outside of the Xs and Os of the game, that we engage on a very dynamic level. And the opportunity to do that in a city like Mobile that is so diverse, I think football is an opportunity to connect people from different backgrounds. And so my role in that is certainly to win football games here and to put a product on the field that the City of Mobile and the University of South Alabama can be very excited about. But at the same time, we are building young men that will, that will go back to their communities. Some of them stay in this community as well and have tremendous influence across the state of Alabama and, and certainly in our community as well. And so I think it's important we keep those things at the forefront of, of our minds in terms of how we're developing players and student athletes alike. Do want to thank you so much for the contributions that you have made to our university, specifically the Mobile County Commissioners Center for Student Athlete Success. What a tremendous building and what a tremendous facility for our student athletes across the board, not just our football team, but all student athletes alike, to be able to engage in their academic progress through that facility and the resources that we've been able to give them is just absolutely tremendous. I wish that's something that we had four years ago when I was here. But, but to see the growth that we're making and the contributions that you guys have made for that is, is very appreciated on our end, as well as the excitement that, that our new stadium has brought to our campus and has brought to our community. The feedback from the recent Senior Bowl was, was truly phenomenal that we had a few weeks ago. Jim Nagy, who is the president of the Senior Bowl, is a good friend of mine. But, but certainly just the feedback that he got from the NFL organizations, people in the community, to be able to use our facilities and resources, and that, to me, is a tremendous thing that we look for moving forward as a community. It's really important that we connect on a dynamic level and that we want to do a great job of engaging the City of Mobile. And so I'm here at your service and certainly want to make sure that I make it known that South Alabama football is here to connect to the City of Mobile, and we would like to do that in any way possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. We're excited for your team leadership. We welcome you back to Mobile. Thank you for being here today, and we certainly wish you all the best of luck.
Thank you so much. Look forward to connecting.
I'd like to call on Commissioner Hudson now to introduce our next very special guest.
Okay. Well, it is certainly my pleasure this morning. We have, as Commissioner Ludgood said, some other, a group of special guests in the house. These are the UMS Wright Indoor Track 4A and 5A Division State Champions. And if they'll come down along with Coach Pat Gally, we have some certificates of recognition to give them. Commissioners, come on up. There we go. Let me break the water here. Isn't this a good-looking group? Let's give them a round of applause. These are state champions, ladies and gentlemen. Division 4 and 5A. They won the state championship February the 5th in Birmingham. They competed in 10 of the 14 events. And I know we have, I have a sheet of paper. We've got two state champion, two, excuse me, just a minute. Let me grab that. Two athletes who won individual state championships. Joseph Perry won the 1,600 meter and 3,200 meter. And you are, you're Joseph?
No, that's Jesse.
Oh, Joseph, okay. And, and we got Philip Hunt with a long jump. Where is Philip? Okay. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
And UMS has participated in track at the state level since the early 1960s, and this is the 15th state championship for the boys' team. This is also, and Coach Gally, where did you go? Step on up here. This is also Coach Gally's, I'm sorry, I keep eating my mask. This is also Coach Gally's 68th state championship. He has been at UMS Wright for 49 years. He's been on the coaching staff. And so I thought, how is that possible to have 68 state champions? And then it was explained to me that he, he coaches both boys and girls indoor and outdoor tracks. So that's how it was possible. But that is quite undertaking for a 49-year career to have 68 state championships, and that is truly amazing. Let's give him a round of applause as well. So anyway, we are, we have certificates of recognition for the team today, and I will let you help me point out the members of your team. We have Barr Chavers. Okay, there you go. Alex Gamble.
Alex is a seventh grader.
A seventh grader?
Yes.
Now, how did, how did that happen? Now, what, what?
No, he's a real seventh grader. He didn't fail or anything.
Okay. So now, what, what grade level do we have here overall?
We've got three seniors here, I think four juniors, one sophomore, and a seventh grader.
Okay, so he's got a long, bright career ahead of him. Do we have anybody that plans to continue track at the, at the college level, maybe? Okay. Most of them. Okay, we have Josh Holston. There we go, Josh. Philip Hunt. Trey Mitchell. Jaden Rollins. And Matthew Taylor. Did we leave anybody? We did, did we miss anybody? Uh-oh. Oh, that's yours. But let's see. I am so sorry. We will certainly, we'll, we'll make sure that you get one.
This is Jackson Graham.
Jackson Graham? Well, anyway. They were kind of sticky, I guess. Anyway, so everybody's got theirs now, right?
Yes, well.
Well, congratulations again, Coach. If you'd like to say a few words on behalf of your team and your program?
I would like to congratulate these guys. There's three seniors, as we said. We have five football players, four, four cross countries, and one who didn't do anything in the fall. So we get a good cross-section of all of our athletes, especially for the indoor, because it's a chopped-up season, because you have Christmas right in the middle of it. So for these guys to go from November, go through the Christmas holidays, then come back, and with all the COVID and everything this year, this was pretty good, pretty good accomplishment. And we went ahead in the meet in the last two events of the meet. We trailed the entire meet until the last two. So it was a pretty good comeback finish for us and really proud of them.
Thank you, Coach. And again, thank you all for being here today. Congratulations and the best of luck on your, all your future endeavors. And we want more state championships, Coach. We also have some pins.
You're welcome. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, Mr. Hodges, we're ready.
Excuse me, Commissioners, you do have a speaker?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ms. Angelo Gudrow to discuss Grand Farms Road West.
I apologize.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I was just coming up. Would like to get an update on Grand Farms Road West to see where we're at with everything, see if we can get some type of timeline.
Brian, Jay.
I'm up. Commissioners, we have received our final document for the right-of-way acquisition. We have about three weeks' worth of work that we need to do with Neighbors Group to go ahead and get squared away with the grant money for the waterline relocation, and then we will be ready to bid, start advertising for bids. So we are very close.
Thank y'all very much. Just a lot of neighbors asking. I'm like, it's gonna get done. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
There are no other speakers. Thank you.
Number one, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 8, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, approve the list of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Number three, adopt a resolution authorizing requests of the Sheriff's Office to dispose of certain items from fixed assets inventory lists.
So moved.
Second.
Number four, approve contract with Mobile Area Chamber of Commerce Foundation, Inc. to Innovation Portal in the amount of $20,000 from District 1 funds for general operating expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Number five, approve contract with Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County in the amount of $15,000 from District 1 funds to purchase an outdoor digital sign for Scarborough Waddle Middle School.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Number six, approve a signing contract for professional services for Mobile County Annex 4-4 build-out to Goodwin Mills and Kaywood for a proposed fee of $142,765.12.
So moved.
Second.
Number seven, approve reappointment of Beth Mariata Lyons to serve on the Board of Directors of the Dolphin Island Water, Sewer, and Fire Protection Authority for a term of six years.
So moved.
Second.
Congratulations, Beth, for your reappointment.
Number eight, approve contract with Landco Forestry for professional forestry management services for a 36-month term.
So moved.
Second.
Number nine, approve authorization to submit letter requests to Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources to amend the scope and budget of the Mount Burn Water Treatment Plant Upgrade Grant Award to include funds for bid services and construction and authorize execution of all associated documents. Funding for this project is provided by the Restore Act through Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources with no county match required.
So moved.
Second.
Number 10, approve authorizing to advertise for requests for proposals for professional consulting services for the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Grant and Project Management Services.
So moved.
Second.
Number 11 has been removed from the agenda. Number 12.
Hey, can I interrupt you? Why was that removed? Do you have any idea why that was removed?
Commissioners, the amended version of Senate Bill 107 addressed the majority of the concerns that our department had. There is one remaining issue, and we had an opportunity to speak with Sunday this morning, Sunday Brassfield, and he assures us that that will be addressed in further amendments to this bill. So we withdraw our objection.
I ask because I worked on this over the weekend, pretty much all weekend, and I had Beth here if we needed her. I don't know if Senator Elliott was able to make it or not, but hopefully it'll meet our satisfaction with the substituted bill.
The, I had a question. The amendments, so it, it doesn't have the financial impact on the county? Does it still roll back the planning jurisdiction?
It rolls the planning jurisdictions back to the police jurisdiction, but it, the main concern, we were concerned about was the building inspections, and it allows them, any municipality that's currently utilizing the building inspections outside in their police jurisdiction, it allows them to continue doing that. So most of them don't want to pull back.
But it, it rolls it back to the mile and a half? I think that was?
It rolls it back to the police jurisdiction.
Well, I, and Beth may can speak more on this. I don't think it really does anything that's not already allowed by state law.
Correct.
I think state law, they could, I guess, this morning, the county, the city council could vote to do it, and it would take effect in January. So I don't, I think some of the things that I read in the bill are actually better than what current law is with the rollback and the amount of time. I think one of the main concerns was that the, which is pretty much cookie-cutter language in any legislation is this bill takes effect 90 days after passage or signed by the governor. And I talked to Senator, Senator Elliott over the weekend, and that language is coming out of the bill. And he assured me that he would work with us to make sure that we had a significant amount of time, which I don't, I don't think he has any say over, over it right now with the state law as it's, as it stands. That's my opinion of the bill, and Beth, you may.
But the, the 90-day issue of concern was the fact that we would be taking over that responsibility and the cost associated with it. So if, if that goes away, that issue goes away, then it's really kind of a moot point, then it's?
Well, I think that, that 90 days, that 90-day clause in the bill just says that the bill, the law takes effect in 90 days.
Right, but that meant the responsibility would pass to the county. But if that's not the case, because the city's going to continue to issue the permitting, then that, that goes away?
It does, and if they choose to, they're, they're looking at adding language. They've already had some discussions, adding language, that if they choose to make that decision to pull back even their building permit, that would go into effect the next January 1st, just like everything else. So that would give the county time to kind of gear up to do that. So the, the language that's kind of in contest right now is about the exemption for families, a family division, and it, it widely expands that. And we talked to Sunday this morning, and he said that that language was not supposed to be in there in that form. It was supposed to address just the municipalities, but the way it's in there, it affects everybody. And he said if it does not get changed, then the ACCA as a whole would be against the bill, because that's language they've been fighting for years.
Okay, so you'll, you'll keep us posted on the status of that?
Yes, ma'am. He, he felt like that would be changed.
There will be a substitute bill introduced in the morning tomorrow, and I'll get a copy of it and forward it out to everybody.
So it'll be a, it'll be a substitute, not amendments to the existing?
Well, it went to a subcommittee and was substituted and amended, and now it came out of subcommittee and went back to the House Committee, and there's going to be a substitute of the substitute, right, Beth?
Well, it might behoove us to be, to read through it again at that point. Okay, thank you for that update.
And Brian, thank you for?
Thank you for your assistance with the opposition to this. It's, it's working out well.
So we're just removing that, or we need to move to table that, since it's on the agenda?
Let's withdraw it right now, Commissioners, if you would, please.
Thank you for taking your time over the weekend.
I'll, I'll make the motion to withdraw that. We'll, we'll formalize it.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Number 12, approve change order number one for Mobile Government Plaza Window Cleaning and Sealant Maintenance to provide for painting of exterior building components. If implemented, the change will increase the contract by $115,878.88. New contract total will be $1,307,801.88.
So moved.
Second.
Number 13, approve authorizing advertised for bids government plaza meeting room renovations.
So moved.
Second.
Number 14, adopt capital planning policy.
So moved.
Second.
Number 15, approve consulting agreement with RHR Consulting LLC for professional services related to the use of procurement cards and other services as needed for the term, for a term of two years.
So moved.
Second.
Number 16, adopt a resolution authorizing requests of the county garage to dispose of vehicle number 7855-2008 Ford Expedition from fixed assets inventory list.
So moved.
Second.
Number 17, approve contract with Oak Grove Volunteer Fire Rescue, Inc. to purchase surplus vehicle 7855-2008 Ford Expedition in the amount of $500, in the amount of $250 from District 1 funds, and in the amount of $250 from District 2 funds.
So moved.
Second.
Number 18 was voted at the conference. Number 19, approve application of YTA LLC for off-premise retail beer and off-premise retail wine license for county store food mark.
So moved.
Second.
Number 20, and we have add wording to that. Number 20, approve purchase by 200 workstations for the county commission in a cost of $779 each for a total cost of $155,800 from the state bid list.
So moved.
Second.
Number 21, approve purchase of 300 monitors for the county commission at a cost of $179 each for a total cost $53,700 from the state bid list.
So moved.
Second.
Number 22, approve authorizing acceptance of the budget amendment to National Fish and Wildlife Foundation grant for the Dolphin Island Causeway Shoreline Restoration Project, Phase 2 project number, and authorize execution of associate documents. This amendment increases the total award from $4,900,000 to $7,851,645 with no county match.
So moved.
Second.
23, approve appointment of David Rice to serve on the Board of Directors of the Dolphin Island Water, Sewer, and Fire Protection Authority for six years, replacing Anne Bridges.
So moved.
Second.
24, approve contract with Cretitan Youth Service, Inc. in the amount of $5,000 for its ambassador program, $2,500 from District 1 funds, and $2,500 from District 2 funds.
So moved.
Second.
Number 25, consider taking the following action on bids.
So moved.
Second.
Number 26, approve amendment to professional services agreement with Dogwood Productions, Inc. to add project design and development of the website of the Love Your Community program for a fee of $5,100.
So moved.
Second.
Number 27, approve sponsorship to the Mobile Council Navy League in the amount of $40,000 for support of the commissioning of the USS Mobile Latoral Combat Ship.
So moved.
Second.
28, adopt resolution declaring the need for a coffee shop in Government Plaza constitutes a public purpose in that the county authorizes expenditure in the amount not to exceed $60,000 from CIP 2019 Government Plaza Renovations Fund for building code upgrades necessary for the Health Department Regulations for Coffee and Food Services Operations.
So moved.
Second.
29, recommend awarding bid for Part 1 Mobile County Soccer Complex Shade Structure and Bench Installation to Acre Construction Company for their low bid in the amount of $88,062.50.
So moved.
I don't have any objection, but I did have a question, I guess, just, oh, my grandpa said there's no such thing as a dumb question, except the ones you don't ask. I was curious, why is that on the engineering agenda and not on the regular agenda? I just, I didn't know first, isn't that a facility? Shouldn't, would that usually be on the regular agenda, or?
Anybody got an answer to that?
Commissioner, we, we have been handling the road construction and the design and construction of the soccer fields, and these are facilities associated with the soccer fields, and the same consultant was doing the design and overseeing the CE and I on that. So we, we just took it on and did it.
Okay, I just?
It could have gone either way.
That was just a curiosity question for, to ease my curiosity. So I, I second the note.
Okay, thank you.
Number 30, recommend authorizing acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds and/or easements from the following project owners for the following projects.
So moved.
Second.
31, recommend approving supplemental agreement number three with Frank Turner Construction Company, Inc. Projects Shilinder Road South to increase the contract by $130,041 for additional paint items needed to modify traffic control at the box cover and relocate water and sewer lines.
So moved.
Second.
32, recommend approving right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track 5 in the amount of $330 for Project Andre Road Grade Drain Base and Pave.
So moved.
Second.
33, recommend approving right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track 2 in the amount of $850 for Project Joyce Circle Lloyd Road and Williams Road Grade Drain Base and Pave.
So moved.
Second.
34, recommend approving preliminary and final plat of Cowart Road Division and approving preliminary and final plat of Estates at Maxwell Farm and approving preliminary and final plat of Travis Road Place.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioners, we have one add-on. Number one, authorize adoption of Mobile County Treasury Emergency Rental Assistance Implementation Plan, which serves as the policies and procedures for the program subject to final legal review.
So moved.
Second.
Number 35, commission announcements and/or comments.
I'd like to congratulate Environmental Enforcement on their recycling event they had last Saturday. They accepted 256 loads of recyclable materials, which included 503 tires. Wow. 21 bins of acceptable electronics and scrap metal. They do a really great job, and the communities are always happy to see them coming. This coming Saturday, we have a clean sweep at the Oil Acortis site at Axis. So that's just a regular household event. So we're just hoping that people will come out and support it. Nothing else? The chair will entertain a, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.